Representatives to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Flaherty wanted to start the meeting with a personal privilege, and I would like Diane to come up here because this is her last time to be at the supervisory meeting.
Boo for retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And I have plates and forks.
Can I take my finger?
Yep. But Els is going to take a picture first.
Oh, Lord.
We wish you very much good luck.
Yes.
And enjoy.
Okay, I'll let you open it.
I'm far away. You're letting grace.
Your last duties.
I want my first piece of cake. That was right.
Well, it is coming.
I have to say, it's been a great journey and...
We need to call the end.
Oh, wow, isn't that pretty?
Let's all get a picture around the table if you don't mind.
Sure.
My kids and grandkids and all, they're all really happy that we have some more time.
Well, I'll get a big picture around.
And it's purple, did you know it said?
I know, my favorite color.
Yes. It matches your shirt.
I'm hiding.
You guys just lined up in appropriate heights too, isn't that amazing?
I immediately go to the front. I immediately go to the front, it's just a habit.
And Els got camera?
And we'll go to El.
Yeah, I'm going to take several, just to make sure nobody's blinking or winking or...
You can cross me out, you know, because I'm fat.
No, we can't. You're part of the team, Kathy.
Ed, you got the memo on the purple, purple laces, purple shirt?
I didn't know anything about it.
Thank you, well, I...
So here you are.
It has been a wonderful journey and I learned a lot while I've been here, but it's time for me to go. After my little medical episode, it's, you do a lot of reflecting and I'm upright and walking again and I need to enjoy myself now.
We're going to miss you.
I'm going to take a little piece with me.
You're going to cut it all up? You got to cut the whole cake.
Aren't there about eight people in the back room waiting for that cake?
There is a whole bunch, yeah.
Mari, take it to the kitchen.
All the audience, you got to cut it so all the audience can have a piece too.
This is lunch.
Leave your phone numbers.
Diane, the wife, actually, get retired, don't get on the C D E board.
No, no.
Yeah.
Diane, you didn't hear that. It said leave your phone number because you're on call.
I knew where to track it down, now I can talk.
Well, I'll be out in the pasture, in the gardens.
Oh, that's all right. You're good. No, I'm good. You want one?
Doing music.
Thank you.
Visiting grandkids.
Not coming to the meeting.
Hey, you know, you can always dial in and watch the...
Oh, yeah.
When you get a mid-lit board.
I think what she's doing, she's moving towards Hitler here.
Yeah, I'm not towards...
I think she's got to show up. Last Thursday, every Wednesday makes a name.
So Kathy, you're going to tempt all of us and you're not going to eat?
You'll see us Friday.
I can take a fridge.
There you go. Fishing?
You close the casket?
I'll close the casket.
I'm impressed. If he gets any good pins for it, we'll be all...
There you go. You're good. Would you like one? I think we've got enough.
Got enough?
Yep.
So you can bring the rest back in the kitchen.
What is it? Oh, yeah, yeah, we call them fiddlers.
Don't forget to cut these for both of you.
They're like in North Carolina, all the east coast, they're everywhere.
Need help, Carrie's?
Oh, he went out to the school.
Basket break.
Okay.
And you just get them by the bucket.
This is the real test for you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Have a wonderful retirement. Yeah, they're great.
It's funny.
Okay, we're in, we'll bring it back to, we'll start our workshop. Rio Center Workshop.
Madam Chairman, no, we have two people in the audience today and they want to speak on non-agenda items, but I don't know if you wanted to give them a moment so they wouldn't have to sit through a workshop discussion unless they're interested in being here.
No, we'll take advantage of being going first.
Sure.
Now that I have a mouthful of cake.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
That was the idea.
Madam Chairman, if the board, if the workshop does take action, what's the board's could once it goes into the reading, depending upon what presentation is made, take action.
You're talking about what, we're discussing the workshop.
Well, no, I guess, are you going to...
These are non-agenda items.
Non-agenda.
Okay, they're not going to speak now or they are?
Yes, but not agenda. If they're allowing it.
I don't think it's going to be an action item.
Okay.
Anyway, we started, are you on?
I don't know.
Go ahead, please, so you don't have to sit out there.
Good afternoon, I have two issues I would like to address. I'm Sharon De Rosier, I live in Devonshire Lakes. On Tuesday, I spoke at the county commissioners' meeting in support of traffic lights over roundabouts on Gateway Boulevard. At this meeting, I was unaware that it had been already decided by the board to go with roundabouts. I listened to all the reasons why roundabouts have been chosen. I've done further research and I'm still not convinced that they are a solution to meet Gateway's needs. In any case, my most pressing question is what are the exact plans for pedestrian safe crossings that you are proposing? Chairman Keicher and Transportation Director Cerchi assured us that crosswalks will be provided away from the roundabouts. But where will they be located? How many of them there be? How will they be made safe to navigate for walkers, for people with carriages or young children, or even motorized wheelchairs? Will these crosswalks need lights and signage? Won't these necessitate disruptions of the existing median and tree canopies? All of these would have been easily addressed by simply putting properly calibrated traffic lights with old-fashioned walk-don't-walk crosswalks at the two major intersections. I hope that you will be able to tell me your plans. The second item that I wanted to talk about was, in today's paper, there's an article about a proposed change to the Lee County's written plan for the development near wetlands. Most of the article is doublespeak that I don't understand, but I am most concerned as to how it may impact Gateway specifically to any development of the lot next to the sand cap bank. We learned last year that the latest developer had asked for a variance to fill in part of the wetlands in the preserve near Devonshire Pond 92. What is your position on this and what are you going to do to ensure that it does not succeed? Thank you.
I'll address just, my personal opinion on the roundabouts is, I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor of them, but the roads are owned by Lee County. We really don't have any say or jurisdiction over whether it's a roundabout or a light. That was decided by the county and the county commissioners and staff and there's, we really have no way of changing their opinion.
The understanding we were given, my friend and I, at the meeting was that it had been discussed here, it had been accepted here, the fire department told her the same thing and...
We don't have...
But even still, they did assure us at the meeting, oh, we're going to address pedestrian crossing, but they don't say, and they say it's off the roundabouts. I did go online and look at different items, roundabouts and so forth, and for instance, this one shows very clearly how they have crosswalks off the circle, but they don't say, they have like a little median and there's nothing to do that says anything about any way of lighting it or stopping traffic or whatever, and you're sort of at your own risk. And I just wonder where are those going? And Ed will corroborate, they talked about, well, if you had a traffic light, you have to take down thousands of trees and what, you're going to have to take down trees to get this kind of approach to all four intersections, all four crosswalks at both the roundabouts. So I just, I want to know, we should be able to make some suggestions to the county and to make some petitions to the county, which we would do if we know how to go about it.
After the meeting, the ladies were outside with Randy and I barged in and asked Randy to make sure since the decision has been made that we, the district, gets a set of the plans as soon as they are completed, not in final form, but maybe in preliminary final form. My concern is, and she brings up an excellent point, if you take, and just imagine going to either one of those two locations and drawing a circle with a radius of anywhere from 75 to 100 feet, you take what is now the crosswalks, which are at the intersection, and you move them back north, south, east and west. The problem is, you move them back to an area that is currently the median and on the other side, you have drainage ditches. So how are you going to connect the dots? That's what I want to see and I pass that on to Randy, I just don't know how with the limited space, look right away, Gateway Boulevard, there's 150 feet. And the recommended for a dual lane roundabout is 200 to 220. That's a round peg in a square hole. I don't know how you go to do it unless you squeeze it. The last thing that I certainly want to see is a squeezed roundabout. They are treacherous at best going through, especially with left-hand turns. So, long story short, I think that when we get those plans from the county, we give them a good once-over to make sure that we file any objections we have or any suggestions we have on how to handle it. But the crossovers for sidewalks really bother me because I just don't know how they're going to do it.
Madam Chairman.
Because they made it clear it's going to be outside the circle.
May I address, take a moment. You have a lot more experience with roundabouts than I, but I have some, okay? And my experience tells me that the engineers like them because they keep traffic moving and they like physical experiences, that they keep traffic moving. Moving traffic and pedestrians is a dichotomy, as I'm concerned.
That's why I don't understand why a traffic light is not the solution. It's the same to me. You could have a traffic light that's calibrated for left-hand turns, for rush hour having longer time limits to make those turns, and traffic has to stop. The problem I came to Gateway Boulevard now is that the traffic never stops.
That's what the engineers don't like, they don't want to keep, they want to keep the traffic moving.
And we have to live here.
The other one too is, is that if you look at any of those little pictures, and I tried to get everybody to go online and Google and look at the website on that, almost every pictorial they have, the sidewalks are on both sides of the road, so connecting the dots is somewhat easier. We have no sidewalks on the east side of Gateway Boulevard.
But we do have businesses and schools and housing developments that need to be able to get back and forth to the walk path.
It's going to be a challenge.
And we could have had walk-don't-walk signs. They work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy Jean Toomey?
Hi, my name is Billy Jean Fonley, I live in Devonshire Lakes, right where the police departments are. First off, to address all of what occurred at the commissioners' meeting when we went on Tuesday, I think it's a little bit absurd that this is going to go in Gateway, either traffic light or roundabouts, either or, without anybody's full knowledge or input prior to their decision. It's a done deal. It's a done deal, and I think that is apparent. I think that's horrific, that a big community like Gateway has no say in anything versus a county road that one here. All of this is wonderful to discuss it, but it's it.
What's interesting is, is that the same day that we were over there, there was an article in the paper of the very issue, the roundabout on McGregor, to where they had a group together and they stopped that way.
It was a city.
I guess I slept through.
Yeah, it was the city of Portland, correct.
I slept through our town hall meeting or informational meeting with the county on this. I didn't know we had one.
I'm finding with Gateway Service District, and I don't want to be negative, because I read it every single week, your website, and there was nothing in it to alert the residents about this crosswalk issue or what's going in here. There's nothing. I found out about it, I called the fire department because I didn't know if we needed that light, I was hoping we'd need that light. He said no. He was very thankful that we were coming, but guess what, at the meeting, he didn't say two words, he didn't even get up and speak.
He more or less implied that they had already discussed all this and made the decision a week before.
So we sat there, had a learning lesson, which is fine, don't get me wrong. So that brings me to the point of any communications of the Gateway Service District and its residents, there is none, I'm sorry to say that. Now, we have the upcoming issue of the apartments and the wetlands, they want to take an acre and a half of our wetlands, straighten it out for the benefit of big business. So what do we? Nothing, okay. Where residents that don't want it, your Gateway Service District that doesn't want it either, but what are we going to do about it? Are we going to just sit and say, okay? And Cecil Pendras was not in favor of postponing, that was in today's paper, the meeting that would postpone the making of decision on the wetlands, of them taking the wetlands or not. He was not in favor of that. So I think he almost wants it thrown.
I'll just address that briefly. We filed, we filed a request for an administrative hearing on that with the Corps of Engineers and already sent them a letter about the negative impacts to the wetlands. And as of three weeks ago, that's still in the bureaucracy, they haven't even gotten out of permitting, you know, the base stuff to have the hearing. So we are on the notice list for a public hearing for that.
Okay. Now, what can we do? We're going to add some pressure on this, residents, okay, for that apartment complex, for them taking our acre and a half of wetlands. We face the wetlands, we see the beautiful birds, half of them probably endangered, we don't have an idea of that, but we face the wetlands, we face this area. So what do you want us to do to help you in this process of this apartment complex going in? Don't get me wrong, we know the P U D says they can have a town center and 183 units. We understand that, that's a given, that was in the rigs, okay. But going beyond the 183, changing what your regulation said in the beginning, that's what we have to stop.
As soon as so, we get notice about that hearing and that date and that information, we'll send it to your H O A also, and to make sure you got plenty of notice, but they haven't even scheduled yet, it's not even out of the Army Corps review.
The meeting for Tuesday's meeting in your Gateway website said it was addressing the apartments.
And that was an error?
That was, that was an error because I caught the error and I called Gateway Service District and then you took it, you know, you had to put, I caught your error. We would have had hundreds of people down there and you, you didn't know about it, you didn't know it was canceled. So there needs to be more communication. I don't want to go on about it, I don't want to beat you up, but you know, I'm a little bit frustrated with no education from you people to the community.
Well, just, I mean, one...
I understand your frustration, I'd just like to say that understand, we're not a regulatory body, we're only, there's only certain things that we control inside of Gateway and new building, new construction and what they do with the roads, those things are not included in what this board can control. I just want you to be aware of that, it's not that we approve these things and then they go to the county, that's just not true.
The one exception is, the wetlands are ours.
Yes, that's true.
And we do have to say so. We can tell them just simply no.
Well, and I also think that we rely on you as, as our defenders, our whatever, to give us direction and to help organize us, because the only way that, what I'm hearing is, is if we can present a united front and make our grievances known, but we can't do that unless we have direction from some oversight agency. And that's what I thought that you guys were for us, and so I'm, I'm asking, is that, can I, can I depend on that?
Madam Chairman, maybe it would help, just so I can get clarification myself, we're talking about the wetlands that are north of Griffin Drive, the northeast corner of Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive.
Yes.
If the district has a drainage easement in its favor over the areas that are intended to be impacted, no activity can occur adverse to our drainage easement without power approval. To the extent there's a conservation easement, not in our favor, but say in favor of South Florida, and it needs to be modified for full activity to occur, then a permit application we need to make to South Florida in addition to court. And there's another opportunity for the district to intervene, saying, hey, we're the operator of this backbone system. So I guess a lot of it's fact-driven, Chris, I can't remember with the Army Corps, was that, if I recall the plans, they're intending to fill in some of the district's drainage easement?
And we sent...
We said, hey, it's our property, our easement, you can't do that?
Yeah, we sent over all those documents to them with a letter protest and sent them to inform us on hearing.
And even if the Corps was to issue a permit to engage in activity in our drainage easement, that doesn't mean they have the ability to interfere with our drainage easement.
If you should get knowledge through any of the permitting with the county that something's coming up, either at the Planning Commission, the Council of Commissioners, can you contact board members? And then we also give the ladies a call. I was there and then in addition was Elsie Gravard, they represented Gateway very well, they were very knowledgeable. It wasn't up there in a typical old hell raising and like you see today on the TV, they, they had their facts, they had their facts. The problem was, the decision, I think, it already...
Was our name.
But they did a very good job of explaining the pros and cons in the details, so y'all did a good job.
Well, I think part of, part of the problem is having that information disseminated down to us.
Yeah.
We can only communicate back out to our residents information that we have readily available, and I think as much as we have advocated for that knowledge share from both the county and the city on specific items, if we, if it doesn't come to us, it's difficult for us to get that information out.
So is that the same thing with the developer saying he wants 380 units or something as opposed to the 180 that he's allowed? Doesn't come to you at all?
No.
Where's it go to?
It's county zoning.
It's a county issue.
It's all a county issue.
Unless it impacts district facilities.
Unless, right, unless it has a specific impact to us and there's an approval associated to...
So it doesn't impact all our other infrastructure?
Our drainage.
Can, yes.
It can definitely impact our...
And sewage and water and...
But it's just, it's almost in the same area, if a developer comes in and owns the land, I mean, we can't necessarily dictate what type of buildings.
That's correct, we have no zoning, building authority, we have the ability, the permit criteria manual to outline what type of infrastructure can be installed as to that's going to be provided to this district, as well as comment on stormwater management issues and we'll review that.
And I guess my point is, I think I can relate to your position, because I think we feel sometimes, hey, how can you do these things in our, in our neighborhood without even giving us a heads up? Even if we have no authoritative power to influence, just a little bit of heads up would be nice, and so we feel that pain too, and I know it has to be extremely frustrating for residents.
I would like some direction as to who can we put pressure on? How do we?
It's the county, I mean Cecil is a, is a good person to...
County commissioners?
Yes.
They're the bail for all of this?
But you can't address the money issues.
Yeah, you can.
We have a county commissioner that lives in Gateway and we didn't hear about the roundabouts in advance at all, so...
We're sorry if we offended you with any of our comments, because we didn't know that. We didn't know you didn't know.
You don't know where our influence always lies or what we have control over, so I understand the frustration. I think it's, we're just trying to make sure we communicate some things we don't have any control over, and we can't even communicate for awareness to the residents if that, if we're not, if that awareness isn't known to us too. I mean, the only thing that we've ever had is the, when the fire department came in two years ago and just gave a quick presentation that they were looking to maybe build and they, their preference would be, you know, a light there. We were in agreement, but again, yeah, so, but thank you for...
I read about the roundabouts in the paper, that's how I found out.
That's how I found out about the meeting, that's why we went, it was in the paper.
Zoning, the zoning board?
Yes.
Had a meeting scheduled April 3rd about changing the number of apartments in that area. It was canceled.
Right.
So what you need to do is probably keep calling the zoning... Oh, I, I, I call them.
You should get them on speed dial.
Weekly. Find out when they're going to have that. That's how I double check if the meeting was, because I just talked to them the day before and the meeting wasn't set. And when I got the meeting from Gateway Service District, it said it, I go, no, 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 there's something wrong here. And I, I talk, or I deal with weekly from the zoning.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you for giving us the time.
I have one question, Mr. Tinkle, is Randy's last name Cerchi?
Cerchi, C E R C H I E.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Now, now we can start the workshop.
I was going to make one comment on, we posted those meeting dates that they were going to have and within that week, like three or four days before they canceled that hearing, so we didn't know and I actually got a call from the county, we're getting calls from Gateway residents about coming to this hearing and we canceled it two days ago and I was like, hmm. But one of the topics that has come up in the past year and has gained more importance and will gain more as we get into the budget is Gateway's rules. And Mr. Tinkle, I know you've made it, made some pointed comments about those and they are somewhat out of date, they haven't been updated in quite a while, and I was really just putting this on the agenda and putting that information in the board book to get the discussion rolling about the rules and what the rules impact and then options to update or change them or how the board might want to move forward as we go through the budget processes here and amending those rules or change them.
Yeah, and there, Madam Chairman, there are a couple of rules, one item for another future workshop might be the rules of procedure, to bring them, the last time they were modified was 2016. So that might be a different topic for a different day, just operationally, how this board operates, interacts and bids and also because of statutory changes, but that could be another day. The one I guess for today is the rule, with the budget philosophy rule, principles, Chris as I call it, that's why I know there's been some discussion. And it was, is it from the older minutes, from back in the Genesis, the CD Genesis?
And I had one question, that was in the background, it said that the rules of procedure adopted on December 5th, 2013, and then amended on June, June of 2012 and March of 2016. Is that December 5th, 2013 date of this date? It seems like...
So the rules of procedure, now that's, again...
What are you looking at?
The, the...
A separate...
The first page, the letter.
Oh, Chris's memo?
Yeah.
Now, the one that was, that's, I think, for us is 2005 rule, maybe.
I know, I'm asking for the background.
No, I think the proper one is, they were adopted earlier than 2013 and they were amended June of 2012 and March of 16.
Right, I was trying to figure out how we could amend something that didn't exist yet. That was my question, so when were they actually adopted, is my question.
Well, the original rules were adopted back in, like, late 80s, the original rules. And then they were brought current, they were brought forward, I think in the early 2000s and then amended in 2012 and amended again in 2016.
So the February, I'm guessing then that the February 14th, 2005 is when they would, we can say they were adopted?
The, no, February 2005 is when this rule as to the budget philosophy was adopted, yes.
Okay, all right.
That's a different rule. That's not rule procedure, it's one of the rules.
If we're going to be looking at the rules, the rules' rules, not just this component of the rules' rules, can we get each, remember, get a copy of what is believed to be the current rules?
Complete rule.
If you go to, into our books and they're, it's immense.
And D M S, did you know, fair to Chris, with that, that's not a rule store.
All's I know is that they're, they're in horrible condition to determine what's a rule and what's not a rule.
And what we may want to do, and we've had some discussions in the past, it's kind of, it can take about a year to really do it, is to re, re-look at all of them, some of them current and re- codify them. And that's mainly more of alcohol or bookkeeping process.
But that's not a challenge to our budget process as this rule binds.
That's correct. But the rules of procedure are the rules that guide board how it operates generally and you're putting items out competitive pages. This rule here, again, is general guidelines and principles during the annual budget review and adoption process. And I think it is timely that you all do that because you start your budget process with May.
We're starting April.
And I think it is timely that you all do that because you start your budget process with May. We're starting April this year. April, sorry, a couple of weeks from now.
Well, this also has a tie-in to, I don't know whether it's a rule or it was just something that was made up years ago. And that is the original 70-20-10 philosophy. I don't know where that came from. I researched minutes of meetings down blue in the face and I couldn't find it. You found it?
Yes.
I'd be interested to read because I think that, in my opinion, has to be resolved before you get into this because the two issues go hand in hand.
With the chair's indulgence, I will, I have retrieved those from the past minutes back in dinosaur's room here. And amongst it, it's my, all the documents, and I'll send it to all the board members and to Chris and to Steve. They all have that. Some of the discussion about how that happened and what was supposed to have happened and what did not happen, as far as looking at that one.
Well, it was, it was a lot of by guessing by God. And we have changed drastically in the work that we do, especially as it relates to stormwater. And stormwater is a big component of the assessment deal. Last year, before we did the budget, Mike and Chris had put together, and I think that's a starting point, to go back and maybe re-review it one more time and then add in the two staff positions that aren't filled yet, but yet try to as best we can determine what their breakdown is relative to, is it utilities, is it water, is it sewer, is it reuse, or is it stormwater? Then is it enterprise or is it not enterprise? Go back through that because as I recall, the last time we were somewhere between 50 and 55 percent, certainly not 70 percent. But I think our challenge is to get that done first before we take this on. This has a lot of connotations, talking to Russ Meyer, Russ Wire. The issue on this is, one, don't want to get into, is it legal? I don't think that's the word I want, but is it, what was the word?
Fair and equitable.
Thank you. Fair and equitable. And then the second thing is, is that it doesn't appear to me that it has been implemented for all of Gateway pursuant to the rule. Because we got people that qualify and meet the conditions of this that aren't being built in accordance with this. So there's a lot of issues that need to be done. But again, first and foremost is that 70-20-10 needs to be really, really looked at closely.
And can you take that a step further with that, that 70-20-10? We wanted to look at that also in the budget because when it comes to administration of the budget, breaking out this cost, obviously it creates a lot of problems for us and finance and management company trying to assign all these costs every time they get an invoice. And we were even looking at, well, let's get whatever the ratio is paid in and then we write the checks. But this stuff about dividing up and, you know, every little thing, it really is. 20 years ago it was fine, but becoming unwieldy.
Look, the other one too is that if we can take, whether or not we can create a stormwater management utility, I don't really care one way or the other. The issue is, can we take what we have and set it up for billing purposes as if it were a utility? You do that and you take the majority of the problems that we have with our assessment and our assessment methodology and you pull out, what, 70 percent of the cost?
Sixty, seventy mile.
A huge amount of our assessment of, what are we at now, 622, 630, ERU, whatever? A huge portion of that is stormwater related. Huge portion. We pull that out and put it under a separate building system, rate system, that may just be exactly what we're doing right now. In other words, an impermeable base analysis. The bottom line is though, the rest of our assessment really falls into place very easy. It's the roads, it's the landscaping, it's the parks and recreation. That's it.
And it can be difficult with a stormwater utility if you do it through the CBD because your assessment is a once a year. So the preferred route maybe is just to turn it into a monthly prize utility. Have it join the utility system and all that is done in a transparent assessment or a small portion added to that utility bill.
So it becomes the policy of the enterprise, but?
Correct.
Yeah, well, and another thing, as we discussed at that workshop and with regards to the assessments, one approach might be, we had the initial conversation with Russ, is you don't have to collect your assessments on the tax roll. You can bill directly. And the remedy for non-payment is a foreclosure. So you could set up a bimonthly billing system for the special assessment for the stormwater system and only dedicate the funds just for stormwater.
Why wouldn't you be able to just really making it simple? Just take what we got right now and divide it by six and bill it bimonthly?
No, you could. And then put, and if you can add it to the utility bill, but as a separate line item, but that has to be paid separately. And that would then, or you could insert a slip in there somehow, but that would be a separate tracking system and foreclosure.
Well, if we're going forward and we're separating out, which I think we've agreed to do, and itemize water, sewer, and reuse, this would be simple. You just have a fourth one that you're itemizing.
No, utilities, sir.
And the bills would be very easy then for you to differentiate. The only thing that you have then would be bills coming from Pelican Reserve for their component of the stormwater management system and the bills that comes from ours.
They have to have a separate mailing name, yeah.
Well, or an account number or a series of account numbers that are for Pelican Reserve and the other account numbers are for the Gateway fund.
Certainly those properties in Pelican that we do not serve with water and sewer.
But no, I'm talking only stormwater. Just stormwater.
Tony, you said that has to be paid separately. You would have to write two checks. You can't just write one check?
Yeah, because one is a che- Again, this, as I mentioned, the question is whether the statutory scheme, I don't believe allows stormwater utility fee for CDDs, it's for cities and counties, but you can impose an assessment and you can bill the assessment directly. You can bill it bimonthly if you want to.
No one's going to pay that twice. You're not going to write.
You're not going to write two checks when you get your utility bill?
Well, we'll look at whether or not you could include that and say, the problem is when you, if they didn't, they have to pay the entire amount. They couldn't split off and say, we're only going to pay the water. We're not going to pay this assessment. Because if they don't pay the assessment piece, then you can initiate foreclosure action against them. Because one of the remedies you have, like the assessment.
Couldn't you pay in total and then round? I mean, you would basically-
That's one thing we can talk about. I'll talk, we'll talk to Russ about that.
That's accounting rights as opposed to-
Your biggest problem when you do that, you have a bill, let's say it's 20 by 20 by 25 by 25, and somebody sends in 75. Who gets short-sheathed? The water, the sewer, the irrigation? Which gets short-sheathed? That's the only time I see it becoming a problem. Otherwise, you, I agree with Doug. You send out a bill that itemizes your water, which we have now, water, sewer, irrigation, and add a fourth one for stormwater, they're going to write a check. If the total of that's $200, you can bet that it's 150 and 50, they're going to write a check for $200.
Which is for ease for our residents. I would want it to be.
If we can do it.
And maybe it's more of an educational program that says, listen, you need to pay the whole thing because we have this is for your water, sewer, and then this is for your stormwater assessment. We're sending you one bill for both. If you don't pay the utility, utilities come off, you don't pay the assessment, you get no closure, but we can, that's an educational. You have to pay it all.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't know what to say. We're talking, we're talking about making major changes on some things for very little advantage that I can see. And we're talking about making changes on the way we bill our residents. These are the same residents who come in to our budget hearings and complain about a $7 or $8 a year increase in their fees. I think we're, I think we are going way astray on this thing. And unless you can guarantee, give me a visual on how this is going to improve our operation or fairness, I'm going to be dragged along.
It would definitely be fair and equitable because the system that we're using right now for stormwater management is absolutely archaic. It's archaic.
That's, that's, that's your opinion.
Russ Wire's doing it.
That's your opinion. Well, he hasn't, he hasn't told me that. I know you guys talk every day.
Yeah, Chris.
He hasn't told me that.
Chris is aware of it.
Well, Chris may be aware of it, but I'm the one, I get to vote. And he hasn't, and he hasn't told me that. It may be true, but I've got to be convinced. I've got 2,500 residents in Pelican Reserve in addition to the thousands over here on this side that I represent. And I'm going to represent to the best of my ability and not on some whim of Mr. Tinkle.
Mr. Tinkle, what's the quick now?
It's not my whim, Bill.
Well, you say.
It's not my whim.
One of the things that this allows for the district to do is have complete transparency because you can see where all the money is coming from that's going into that fund. And you can see exactly what it's being spent on, like storm drain cleaning or flowway cleaning. It's, you know, it's stormwater management. So it's, when people say, I'm paying, what am I paying for? You can show them exactly what they're paying for.
That may be an advantage for Mike and the other accountant, but nobody that I know of, residents, looks at that stuff. They just want to know how much you're going to have to pay each year.
Until the rate consultant and the Russ Wire goes through and comes up with the proper ERU calculations for Gateway, which what we have right now for stormwater management is based upon a 500, 600 acre parcel of land that was in 1986 guesstimated to come up with a billing, which came up with that multiplier of 5.8. It's purely time long overdue to get it right.
But does it matter?
A good example would be your commercial properties. The commercial right now, especially if they have multiple floors, they're getting screwed on because they're measuring each floor. Well, when water falls, it falls on one rooftop, not each individual floor. So it's just wrong. So the issue is, is that until we get Russ to come up with what the new system looks like, and again, when I say system, talking about stormwater management now, because the rest of those are almost secondary. Stormwater management is the big bucksman. Sees what it is. I wouldn't be able to sit back here and say, who is going to benefit and who's not. But I can tell you one thing from what I do know that he's doing and other communities are doing, it will be fair and equitable.
Just a quick point of clarity. I don't, I don't have any problem with the purpose and the value of the, of the assessment methodology. I think the question is, is there any mandates, restrictions, or regulations on how we bill? I mean, could we go through the rate, do the assessment methodology update, adopt the recommended approach, but still either bill them in an assessment or bill them individually in a separate, I mean, that's really what it boils down to, right?
Yeah, I think one of the concerns is the, there's been discussion about having a dedicated funding source for stormwater utility. And there's the statutory mechanism for counties and cities for stormwater utility fee. Again, I don't believe it's available to CDDs, but if you impose a new special assessment and you say, the purpose of this special assessment is for stormwater management, capital repair and replacement, reserve, operation, and maintenance, you then have to have a notice public hearing, a big ad in the paper, individual notice to people because you're changing or creating a new assessment. And you cannot change the use of that money unless you go to another public hearing with notice again and a big notice in the paper.
It's dedicated.
Yeah, I get, I get that.
But that means up to how can you bill it?
Right, that's my question.
You can choose the uniform collection process to put on a tax bill if you want to get it annually. Or you can build-
Like we do now?
Correct.
So we can go as is?
Or you can build directly.
Okay, so that's really what it boils down to is-
When you do a direct bill, your remedy is to foreclose or if there's a pass-through assessment from the direct billing process, the following year you can put it on a tax bill.
Yeah, I think that's, I understand where you're coming from. Whereas it's not so much the need to do it and whether we, I think we've also, we agree that where there needs to be this, you know, this assessment methodology. I think the question is, how are we going to bill it? Do we keep it in the existing structure or do we pull it out separately? That's where the, that's where the rubber meets the road.
That may be right, but we have to keep in mind that the things that we do have to be for the benefit of the residents, not for the benefit of one or two board members or the accounting side.
And I agree with you, Bill, but the benefit to the residents is the storm water, the storm management system is going to be maintained, which for 25 years it wasn't. This creates the mechanism that it can be in continuous maintenance. And right now, we don't have a really good funding source for that. This allows for that funding source. And if we're billing it every other month-